Everybody take a five-second drink of water? And come have a seat at the rug. Skittles are the best. Mrs. Hatch's class, we've been talking a lot about fables and folktales. Do you remember this one?
Medio Poyito.
Great job. Medio Poyito. Do you remember this one? Peter Rabbit. I thought it would be really, really fun if you guys talked about the stories and told each other the stories all over again. Maybe you could even act. Wow, everything went quiet. I guess that means it's time to start. So, we want to welcome you to our board meeting tonight. It's great to have so many of you here. And we have some student board members who are not up here yet, but we saw them upstairs. So, I think they'll be coming down. Here they come. They're making an entrance right now. There are Woods Cross High School Student Buddy Officers, Jarrett Coleman and Macy Green. And Superintendent Linford's going to introduce them a little bit more in a minute. Welcome. Okay, we are going to start with our pledge of allegiance. And Mr. Jarrett Coleman is going to lead that for us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jarrett. Appreciate that. Okay, we're going to give some time to Superintendent Linford to introduce us to these two.
Well, we'll get a little more lengthy introduction a little later on the agenda. But I want to really welcome Jarrett and Macy. Aside from serving their school as student buddy officers, and one thing I like to say, I like to remind people of is, student government work is not very glamorous, right? It's a lot of just behind-the-scenes, not a lot of gratitude received, just a lot of work behind the scenes. And our officers work incredibly hard and don't get much in return for their service. So, really grateful to them. But they also serve on our Student Advisory Council. And they help me as a superintendent, maybe first and foremost, have a better sense of what's going on in our schools and a better connection to schools. And as I make decisions, especially, and want to understand certain elements, or maybe, and especially cultural elements, how does it feel as a student in your school right now? These two are, they just, they ooze leadership. And they have this confidence, but look how approachable they are. Just super sweet, kind, confident leaders. And, you know, we're lucky to have them tonight, but we're lucky having them serve our school district every day.
Great. Thank you, Superintendent. And we'll hear more from you guys later. Okay? And anytime you want to say something. Always love to hear from our students. So, we are excited about our student performance tonight. And Mitch Hall is going to come up and introduce them.
Oh, wait. Oh, sorry. I'm pleased to introduce-
There you go.
There we go. I'm pleased to introduce the Sunset High Solstice Choir and Advanced Percussion Ensemble. The Sunset Junior High Choir and Band Programs regularly collaborate to give students opportunities to experience different musical styles. Both the choir and the band program at Sunset regularly receive superior ratings at district and other local festivals and use music to encourage collaboration, creativity, citizenship, and student well-roundedness. Please enjoy tonight's performance of Carol of the Bells.
That, that was absolutely beautiful. Thank you so much. We have a plaque for you guys. And stay, why don't you stay there and then, yeah, so you can get your plaque. And you'd need to get more accolades because that was absolutely beautiful. One of my personal favorite Christmas songs. So, congratulations. That was an incredible performance. Michelle Barber's our board member over that area. And she and Superintendent Linford are going to present you with the plaque. And while they're making their way down there, I wanted to mention your teachers, Taylor Rowley and Sarah Johnson. Want to thank them too. And it was just great hearing from you. What a way to start the Christmas season. And we're going to take a photo. We need- While they're arranging for the photo, do we have parents of these students in the audience? If you want to, why don't you stand up or raise your hand like you did? And let's give you a clap too because we know that this is not possible without the parent's support. So, thank you for supporting your students. Are we ready? Thank you so much. Thank you for being with us tonight. That puts us all in the Christmas spirit. And guess what? Your photographer, her name's Noel. And so, she has a Christmasy name, so that all fits together. Thank you so much for being here. We appreciate it. It was beautiful. Okay. While they're making their way out, we love to hear from the public at our board meetings. So, we have time for a public comment. And I just need to read the rules before we do that. So, at the start of each business meeting, we encourage and welcome members of our community to give a public comment. We really do love to hear from you. And the sign-up with your contact information has been out in the hallway. And this is it prior to this meeting. And you'll be called up one by one to speak. This is not an opportunity to air complaints or comments about individual student education issues, bidding contracts, or issues related to employment, for which other avenues exist. But derogatory comments about district employees or board members will not be allowed. And we try really hard to treat everyone with dignity, respect, and kindness. And we ask the same of you. Each speaker will be given two minutes to give their comment. And that will be timed. And you'll be given notice that your time is up. And please know that we are listening and we're taking notes on what you're telling us. And there will be follow-up for your comments. And so, we have Sandy Jensen, whom I met in the hall. So, it's great to have you, Sandy.
Good evening, members of the board, district leaders, Superintendent Linford, and attendees. My name is Sandy Twiyan Jensen. I teach first grade at Woods Cross Elementary School. I have been married for over 30 years and have a son. My story began five, oh, well, I should say, when I was five and a half. I came to the United States from Vietnam. And the only word I knew back then was hi. And today, it's still my favorite word. That word has opened many doors for me. It has helped me meet people. And since then, I've learned a few more words, so I'm able to use them and teach first graders, if that's saying something. I have been a part of the public, running a nonprofit theater for the past 34 years as one of the co-founders and executive director and trustee. And the jobs that I've had as a theater person has trained me well to be a teacher because there's a lot of drama in school as well as outside of school. I just want you to know that I have taught for 14 years. And seven years of those 14 have been here with Davis School District. I absolutely love my first graders. I adore them. They're brutally honest. They are inquisitive. They are curious. And first grade is where big dreams begin. And so, I like to not only think that I teach them academic stuff, but life skills. How to push through challenges like you guys do. And I'm hoping that I'm mentoring them to forge them to become future leaders so that they can solve problems and be resilient in our community and just great citizens. And outside-of-the-box thinkers. I invite you to come to my school and watch these littles learn in their everyday process. But also, this May, our school is doing production. Oh, my time is up.
Go ahead and finish your thought. I think it started a little late.
Come and see our show and watch these kids just give you a night of laughter. And they've worked together, doing teamwork and just providing you a fun night.
What's the name of the show?
It's going to be Robin Hood 2. So, it's a musical parody. So, you will hear songs that are parody that these littles don't know.
Awesome. All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate your comment.
You're welcome.
Okay. Next, we have board recognition for Canyon Heights. And Ms. Chadley Bodily is going to tell us about Canyon Heights.
Hi, President, Vice President Price and School Board. I actually get to introduce Brad Christiansen, Director Brad Christiansen, who's going to come up and talk a little bit more about our adult ed program Canyon Heights, which is one of the best programs in our district. So, I'm excited to turn it over to him.
Okay. Great.
Appreciate that. President Gerard, Vice President Price, Superintendent Linford, board. So excited to be with you tonight and to celebrate the accomplishments of our Davis Adult Education Program. I'd like to call Marcy Flocken up if I can. Marcy? Marcy is our coordinator of that program. And I'd like to let you know what the award is, but then I'd like to qualify some interesting facts that I think you'd be, you'd like to hear that support why our Davis Adult Education Program received this prestigious award. Okay. On October 7th, the Utah State Board of Education recognized our Davis Adult Education as the 2025 Best Overall Program with the highest overall measurable skill gain percentage statewide. That's huge. Okay? Now, our Davis Adult Ed Program, under Marcy's leadership, serves learners age 16 and older at three locations, Kaysville, Clearfield, and the Davis County Jail. They're providing pathways to a high school diploma, GED completion, and English language learning from beginning literacy through advanced proficiency. So, this is what it means now. Okay? This means out of 41 programs in the state of Utah, our Davis Adult Education Program had the highest percent of students that have made measurable academic gains, enroll or finish post-secondary credentials, and earn a GED or diploma. Davis Adult Education was the only program that achieved all 12 targets in academics. Pretty cool.
Yeah.
Okay? Now, in addition to that, okay? This is awesome. In addition, success of the program is strengthened through the partnership with Davis School District, Davis Technical College, the Department of Workforce Services, Vocational Rehab, and the Clearfield Job Corps. Now, there's a reason for that as well. So, under the work of our counselor Tina Carper at our Davis Adult Education Program, she has supported students in successful transition into post-secondary training or unsubsidized employment. And due to her efforts, results have improved by more than 100% over the past two years and rank among the highest in the state of Utah. So, under Marcy's leadership, Tina's excellent work, the work of the fine faculty back here. I see many of you and know many of you. Okay? Because of that, this last decade, enrollment has doubled. And we have maintained a statewide top performance. And at its core, Davis Adult Education changes lives, helps learners build brighter futures for themselves, their families, and our community. Okay? And Marcy, I hope it's okay that I quote you. You attribute the success of your program and the program that you work in, y'all, to the faculty and staff setting high expectations, being flexible, constantly reviewing data and practice. And here's your theme, being united as a school team in their attitudes and action. That's awesome. That's your theme that promotes the goal of reducing the cycle of poverty. So, with that, okay, we thank you all, your faculty and staff, Coordinator Flocken and Ms. Carper, okay, for receiving this prestigious award from the state of Utah for all your hard work with the students and getting these outcomes and winning this award from the state of Utah. You are truly the best in the state of Utah.
Wow. You know what? These- I would love the staff to stand up as well. And we'll include you in the picture. And we want to give you a clap and accolades as well. If you have any of the staff, go ahead and stand up because, yeah. You know? These, these are not just facts and numbers. These things mean a lot to your students. And they're life-changing, life-changing. So, the work that you do is changing lives. So, thank you for what you do. We appreciate you so much. Ms. Flocken, would you like to say a few words?
The only words I have is that what we accomplish, we accomplish together. We accomplish as a team. This work cannot be done in isolation. And all of the people standing here and some that couldn't be here tonight because what are they doing? Teaching night school?
Yes.
This is the power of a team. And these people are some of the best I have worked with in my 30, almost 35-year career. And I wouldn't trade them for anything. They're the hardest-working, most dedicated people I have ever worked with in my life. And the fact that we were able to turn a program that was really good into something really great, it's only partially my leadership. It's really all of them because they're the ones that do the boots-on-the-work, the hard work. And I'm thankful for them. And some of the people in this room already know this. I will be retiring in January. And I'm leaving on a high, which makes me feel really great. So, whoever can take over this position is going to be better than me with more ideas and take it from where it is and make it even better and maintain the number-one status in the state, which I'm really, really proud of. It's not hard. I mean, it's just so hard to be number one out of 41. There's a lot of great programs out there. But meeting all of those targets was teamwork. And I appreciate everybody who backed me on that. And that includes the board, every single one of you in one way or another, Superintendent, Mr. Lefle, all of you have contributed to this, and especially Brad and Chadley. And I'd like to thank them for their continued support. When I had problems and stuff, they had my back every time. It is truly teamwork. So, thank all of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. And Ms. Flocken, you will be so missed, so missed. Great job. Great job. We have a plaque to give to you. And Ms. Mercer is going to give that to you, along with Superintendent Linford. And just congratulations. This is a huge accomplishment. Wow. So, let's take the photo and just thank you. Thank you. Congratulations. You guys- Oh, is Marcy, yes, Marcy's family's here? If you could come up, we'd love to take a picture. I'm sure that maybe you're excited about her retiring. We're not, but we are because we know she has great things in her future with her family. So, thank you, Marcy's family, for sharing her with us. I know it takes supportive family to do what Ms. Flocken has done. And Mr. Christiansen, our Student and Family Resources Director, he's in there too. We appreciate him. Awesome. Thank you. Congratulations. Okay. You guys are welcome to stay for this riveting, exciting meeting if you would like. But we understand if you don't want to stay. But thank you so much for being with us. That was our great opportunity to be able to honor you. Okay, next, we have our committee reports. And we have Ms. Michelle Barber for our UHSSA report.
Thanks.
Go ahead, Ms. Barber.
It's kind of a hard one to follow because it was such an exciting thing and also a little sad. So, thank you, Marcy. You'll be missed. Okay, I wanted to give a report on one of the assignments I have. Or I wasn't assigned that I asked for. But anyway, so I wanted to give a report from the UHSSA Board of Trustees that I sit on. And the UHSSA is the Utah High School Activities Association. And basically, it's a leadership organization for all high school activities throughout the state of Utah. And I didn't know very much about this organization. You'd see their logo on all of the trophies that every school covets and hangs in, or displays in their trophy case and the medals. But I didn't really know what this organization, association, did very much until about a year ago, I was approached by some principal, high school principals that I really trust and asked me to run for a school board seat on that Board of Trustees, which I did. And with the support of this awesome board here, I was able to be elected. And it's nice. It's been really good that Davis School District finally has some representation on that board that really affects so much of what we're doing. So, I'm just going to give a little update how big of a, the reach the association has. There's 159-member schools. 149 of those have sports. There's 18 different athletics activities that they cover. Everything from football to lacrosse to volleyball. And there are over 86,000 students across the state that are participating in those. And there's two different activities, forensics and drama, which are fun, and four music activities. So, that covers band orchestra, sorry, three different music activities, band orchestra and vocal. So, that's 19,000 students right there. So, as you can see, there's a lot of reach that it has and what the association does. And I'm still learning. But it sets activities, standards for activities throughout the state. So, we have equity in participation. And they oversee all of the officiating, which is a huge undertaking, as well as coaches, training, and credentials. They sent out 26,000 credentials throughout the state this past year, in this past month. So, when you see those UHSSA lanyards that everybody walks around in, I forgot mine, just know that they've actually been trained and there's a background check and a lot of things that go into that. If you go to the UHSSA website and app, you can see a lot of good information, like the calendar. You can see all of the sports that they have. You can follow your favorite sports teams. I get an update every time Northridge plays, so that's exciting. And I just want to cover a few of the agenda items that we've been going over that are worth noting. When I ran my campaign back in January, one of the things I said I really wanted to focus on was supporting students, the overall athlete. And that really means encompassing more than just the activities, but their mental health and their academics. And that's been a really strong theme this past year as well. So, we're looking at calendaring and moratoriums specifically. I mentioned earlier, I got to sit in on a listening session with Representative Hall at the Capitol. And she was just saying some feedback that she had that students felt like they were playing so much, sports so much. It was such an avid, such an involved time. There was not as much time for family time and academics and a lot of injuries happening. So, she is, saw a lot of feedback about that. And the UHSSA is taking some action and aligning with that feedback to try and give a better balance for athletes and time off that they can focus on being with their families, away from sports, with their bodies healed, train, and other things. And so, I'm really excited about that. And it was good to get some feedback from all of our high school coaches and athletic directors on that. Another fun thing they do that's happened this year is they do an emerging sports survey where they basically survey and want to find out what sport students are competing in, actually competing in outside of the already sanctioned sports. And that was really fun. We actually got to have a presentation from the Utah High School Pickleball Association came and presented to us. They also presented to the executive committee on proposing that pickleball become a sanctioned sport. And then, the last thing I want to talk about, which is probably one of the biggest items that the UHSSA does that I'm excited to finally have a voice on and be really an advocate for all schools, especially for Davis School District, is the realignment that will be happening for, in 2027. And so, even though it seems like we just barely got done with realignment, we're already starting that process again. And basically, what that does is it aligns where the member schools are classified by size and then who they play and their terms of competition. And, yeah, I'm excited to make sure that I- And, uh, yeah, I'm excited to make sure that I understand that process really fully and, uh, see where, how, what we can do to make sure all schools have schedules that promote reasonable travel time. That's a big thing. And so students can focus on school. They're not missing too much school. They have equity in competition. And, um, how we can support the highest level of competition in their academic experience. And, uh, earlier this year I heard Superintendent Linford say it really well, that the activities that we support in our schools are part of our academic experience. That is what we are, that's why we have these activities is so that they can become well-rounded students and, uh, um, adults that go in and they're high contributors in society. So I'm excited to have a voice on that and I will keep us updated how that goes.
Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Barber. And now we have board reports, even though it hasn't been too long since we, we met. But I, um, think you might have a couple of things to say, Ms. Mercer.
Well, I, I missed the last meeting.
Yes, you did. So you might have more to report. And then after Ms. Mercer, then we'll go back down to Ms. Barber if she has anything else. I don't know if you do and down this way. So.
Yeah, go ahead.
No, no, you go ahead. Go ahead, Ms. Mercer. I, I'm not sure she's, has anything else, but we haven't heard from you since you got back from your trip.
Yes, yes, I had a phenomenal trip, but, um, I'm going to review some things that happened before then because I missed that time and I haven't missed the two weeks between then. So I got to attend an apple party at Foxborough Elementary, third grade, where, um, they did math problems and surveying and it was just so great and so much fun. Um, I went to the Woods Cross Elementary PTA. Um, I also participated in the, South Davis Junior High has a program called PALS, which is not deep pals, but it's called Parents at Lunch. And they invite parents to come and just walk around. They have a lot of ground to cover during lunchtime. And so you just get to walk around and, and see if you can get junior high school kids to chat with you. Although I will tell you that it's a lot less awkward than it was when I was in junior high and hoping that people would, would talk to me at lunchtime. So, uh, it's a really great way to get parents involved and feel that ownership at school. Um, I attended tech rehearsal for the parody of Into the Woods Cross, which was phenomenal, and Woods Cross also put on a performance of Crucible, which was amazing. Their theater department just goes and goes. They have another performance tonight happening right now, actually. And attended the district STEM fair at, um, in Leighton Event Center, and that was phenomenal and brought to bring, got to bring some of my family. And one of the most exciting things, um, that I realized, um, in, uh, in October about being on the board was that I can just show up at a Halloween parade for elementary school and, and I, and that was amazing. I'd missed those for several years, so that was really fun. And then also at South Davis, I participated in their Red Ribbon Week. They did different days of different, um, types of kindness and, um, and commitments to, to safety. And that was really fun to get to go and talk to, um, different classrooms about signing a kindness pledge and, and creating a culture of kindness within the school. I attended art night at Odyssey Elementary, um, and then also went to Valley View Elementary, who had a night that they called the Night of Magnificent Math. And where they invited parents to come and learn about the math programs that the school is using and how to best support their students in using those math programs, which I thought was fabulous to answer parents' questions specifically about math programs. So we have a wonderful district.
Yes, we do. Thank you so much, Ms. Mercer. Um, Ms. Barber, did you have anything else besides that?
The only thing I was going to say is I did a really fun thing, is I got to, um, go to the teen centers at both Farmington and Davis and be there for a donation from, uh, Mercedes-Benz. And they brought in a Jazz Power Forward to help display them, and I felt short in his presence. And so I feel like that really needed to be noted. There's a picture somewhere to defend it or to verify that. But it was really fun and, um, I will say it was interesting because that was a really big deal. You know, they took pictures. They had a big drop off. That was really fun. And just the day before I had been at another teen center and helping some other, um, communities or groups make donations that they'd been gathering in a smaller way. And I just wanted to say all types of donations are welcome. You know, not, they don't all come with a fanfare or, or press release or whatever, but they all are needed and they're all appreciated. So that was a really great way to kick off the holiday season.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Hogan.
Great. Um, I just want to mention that I had the opportunity to go to several community council meetings in the schools in my district, which I love. So I wish I could say something about every single one of them, but uh, because of time, I'll just mention them. Went to Shoreline Junior High, Sand Springs Elementary, Syracuse Junior High, Ellison Park, Syracuse High and Cook Elementary, where my kids went to school. So that was fun. Um, I also attended the Council of Governments last month in October. And I'm the one school board member that I meet with all the mayors and the county and the county commissioners. Uh, it's always an interesting discussion. This last time we talked, um, I don't know if you knew this, but there is um, a guy, and I don't have his name in front of me, I apologize. He is the county weed guy. Like he can help you if you have certain kinds of weeds that are hard to get, uh, rid of, uh, around your house, which I didn't know that was a thing. Um, and then we also talked quite a bit about, uh, the homeless shelter, which will be in Clearfield this winter. Um, and they need volunteers for that when that happens. Um, also spent some time on the calendar committee, which we'll be talking about the calendar here in a few minutes. And then the last thing that I loved is I went to the Prince of Egypt performance at Syracuse High, and it was very, very good. The talent was amazing and, uh, really enjoyed it.
Thank you, Ms. Hogan. Okay, Ms. Price.
All right. Um, I was able to attend a few school community councils, one at, uh, West Point Elementary and one at West Clinton Elementary. And, um, at West Clinton, they had done a food drive. And their whole like entryway and then hallway, like by the office and down the hall was just full of donations. And, um, all of those donations were going to go to Syracuse High and Clearfield High, to the food pantries that we have in those two high schools. And it was just wonderful to see the community coming together to, to help other community members. Um, I had the opportunity to attend the announcement of the twenty-twenty-six Assistant Principal of the Year. And it's our own Erin Stumo at Syracuse High. And, um, I'm just really excited for her and I know that she does great work. I was able to work with her as a parent on the community council at Syracuse High before I became a board member. And then, um, just continue to work with her, um, as a board member and as still a parent. Um, but I'm just so appreciative of the great administrators that we have, the people that lead out and that help our students to be successful. So just shout out to Erin, but also our other great administrators throughout the district. Um, I also attended the Prince of Egypt at Syracuse High, and it was a phenomenal performance, a lot of talent. And I love it because I think that we would probably hear that at every high school, just the, the talented students that we have that, that share their gifts and, um, uh, it wa, it was just, it was amazing. And, and you think about those that are performing, then everything that goes on behind the scenes too, and, and those are our students that are doing those things as well. Our Davis Education Foundation Board Meeting was at Snow Horse Elementary, uh, two weeks ago, week and a half ago. And, um, they had an assembly where Farmington High came and, um, made an announcement of how much money they had raised, um, for an adaptive playground for Snow Horse Elementary. That was what Farmington High did for their big fundraising efforts. And it was just, it's always just wonderful to be in the schools and to just see how excited the students were about it. And the cute little students that are going to benefit from the adaptive playground, like they were so excited. And, um, just the great student leaders that, that were there to, you know, hype up, hype up the elementary age kids. It was a great, a great place to have a meeting. Um, I attended a consolation, the consolation game for the junior high boys' basketball at West Point Junior High, and it was fun to be able to see West Point Junior High and Syracuse Junior High play against each other. But, uh, West Point won, go Warriors. No, that's where my kids went. So got a special place in my heart for West Point. Uh, and then I also attended a Syracuse High girls' basketball game. Today I had a opportunity to go on a, a tour with some of our CTE, with Brian Hunt and some of our other CTE and Catalyst Center folks, um, at KEO MAC. And, um, I've, I've had several conversations the last month, um, just with, with Brian and some of his team members in the Catalyst Center, just about public and private partnerships. And I'm just, we have some really amazing businesses and community partners. And it's just a testament to the importance of partnership and collaboration. And so I just really appreciate, um, that we have that in our community. And that as a district, we're able to work together with these businesses, with these organizations to benefit our students. Um, academically, um, we have our great partners with the Davis Education Foundation that help our students, um, in other ways as well. Um, and then lastly, we had our holiday party last night, and I just want to say thanks to Carrie and Tiffany and Esther and Ashley and whoever else worked on that. It was, it was really great. And you guys just do so much for us and know that you're appreciated. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Price. I also wanted to, uh, mention that and say thank you to all of you who put together the board party last night. It was so much fun. It's just such a pleasure to be able to work with so many amazing people in this district. Um, I got there just in time to meet, uh, Sviatoslav. I know he's Ukrainian. I have a son that speaks Ukrainian, but I don't. So I'm, I don't know if I'm saying that right. But Michelle, if you, uh, thought that you felt short in this, meeting him, I felt very, very short meeting him. But, um, what a nice person and, and what a great generous, uh, donation, um, from Mercedes-Benz also. It was a privilege to be able to, to watch Erin Stumo receive that award. That was great to be there, and that was a well-deserved recognition for Ms. Stumo. Um, we, um, met as a belonging council and that was, that was a great meeting. And, um, it's just wonderful to be able to have community members that support us so well and support what we're trying to do in Davis School District. And it was great to receive input from that group. Things about, um, you know, that we want to know as we work on our strategic plan, to be able to get their feedback also. And the fact that they're so supportive and are willing to, uh, give their input is just so helpful. I'm grateful for that group of people that, um, serve on that Belonging Council. So, um, I was able to attend a Leighton Community That Cares Key Leader Meeting, but I'll report, um, more on that later. That's a great organization doing good things. It was wonderful to be able to tour the KEO MAC facility today. It's just so exciting to see, uh, those partnerships that we're forming and expanding on, um, in our CTE offerings. It, it's funny because I've got, sat next to Scott Maryhugh from KEO MAC for literally years at, uh, the Davis Technical College Board of Trustees meetings, but I've never seen what he works on, what he does. So it was just great to be able to take that tour. It was, it was fascinating, actually. So, uh, great opportunity that we're that we're offering to our students and going to expand on those. So, um, I think that's about all I have. And we'll move on to Ms. Powell.
I don't think I can top Ms. Hogan's weed guy.
The weed guy.
I feel like I need to clarify that.
That was the best comment yet. Yeah, in my mind, I was like, because I'd been attending communities of care meetings and they're talking about weed. So I was thinking something else. Anyway. Anyway, I, I don't have a whole lot to add because it was been Thanksgiving break and, um, yeah. I've had a lot of community feedback, though I have to say, this, the last couple of weeks, um, including about weed, but anyway. Um, so, yeah, I, I'm just gonna, I, I'm, I don't have a little whole lot to report today, so we'll move on.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. Okay, Ms. Stevens.
Ms. Powell did attend a Head Start meeting for me, which I appreciated that. So thank you for covering for me. Um, and I attended Soup With The Soup, which is always a real highlight. Um, I really appreciate that our superintendent does that and all those that help make that happen. Um, I think it's probably not that common for the superintendent to take as much time as he does, uh, interacting with our students. Not just with Soup With The Soup, but with the student body officers. And I just really appreciate that, that, um, we really do focus on the student and it starts at the top with our superintendent making time to do that. Um, but then also just seeing the students that are there and the goodness that they have and the ways that they are leading out in their schools, being good examples. Um, we really have a great community. So that's always a highlight and that's, that's all.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Stevens. And now we're going to get to hear from Jared and Macy, and I'll let Superintendent Linford tell us about that.
Well, really, I am going to turn the time over, uh, to Woods Cross for a few minutes and want to recognize, uh, a couple Woods Cross. If you're from, if you're here to support our officers, uh, maybe give us a stand, stand up. Is it just principal?
Atwood, Atwood, stand up.
Stand up a little longer than that.
Atwood, stand up. Yeah.
And also I want to point out, we have, we have students, any students here are like as an assignment in a class, they're forced to be here? Anybody? No?
Um, yes.
Okay, yeah, we could tell, we could tell. Okay. All right. Just want to recognize them, some of the folks in the room.
I, I think they're having a great time. Are they? No?
They're going to come next time, just for fun.
But I'll turn the time to Macy, Jared.
Okay, so we're just going to talk about, uh, Woods Cross for a little bit. Um, Atwood's Cross, our, uh, motto is everybody's somebody. So that's kind of like the main goal at our school is to make sure everyone feels loved, welcome and like happy to be at our school. Um, so we try and live by it and try and make everybody feel it and try and remind everybody of it every single day. Um.
Um, one of our main things that we've done this year is to just really make sure that people have a spot at our school and to really feel welcome. And, um, especially with sports this year, we've had really good success with our teams and how they've been playing. We've won a few state spots in our sports, which has been awesome. And we've just made sure to announce when the sports are and other activities too, like for theater, theater and things. We've had, um, crazy attendance just because we've let people know what's happening.
Um, yeah, so we're just trying to surround everyone and get everyone hyped up for all of our, uh, activities and get people there and get a good, yeah, group of people there. Um, another super cool thing Woods Cross does is the, the teachers and faculty and admin really care about their students. Um, like we have teachers here like, uh, Atwood and our principal. And, um, uh, one example of that, that Woods Cross does that's really cool is Wildcat Wishes. Uh, we do this thing, Roxy Katanzaro is one of our teachers and she noticed lots of students at our school uh, weren't really getting their Christmases and like didn't get presents and Christmas wasn't a happy time for them. So she, um, made this thing called Wildcat Wishes where it's basically a sub for Santa. And, uh, we're working on it, SPOs right now. This, uh, is grind, like the crunch time, trying to get it all done. And last year we helped six hundred, uh, people and families, uh, in our community and at our school and got their Christmas, they got them a hundred and fifty dollars worth of Christmas presents. So that's a really cool thing we do at Woods Cross.
Yeah, and, yeah, we're just trying to help people and to bring joy and connection to everybody. And yeah.
Thank you so much. Um, Woods Cross sounds like a fun place to be. So thank you. You guys are really good examples and great leaders. So we appreciate having you here. And, uh, feel free to jump in if there's something else you want to say tonight. So appreciate Principal Richens here and being here. And, um, Ms. Atwood also. So, okay, Superintendent Linford, how's his report?
Thank you, President Gerard. I, I do want to make a quick note about Woods Cross, something that I admire about the school. Um, I, I, I first saw this on a principal's signature when I was a brand new high school principal, you know, so. you know, so that was, man, I hate to even say it, over 15 years ago. And that idea that at Woods Cross, where everybody is somebody, is pretty special, that, that it is endured in that way. And to see administrators come and strive to, to honor that tradition is pretty special. And to see student leaders also owning something that has just been around, that's something that's bigger than all of us, this idea of that connectedness. So, just really love that. I want to remind everyone how special that is. I just want to, I've, I've tried to focus my last few superintendent reports on these, these big concepts that we focus on as a district. And I realize I spend a lot of energy talking to legislators. I mean, even today, I mentioned what I want to talk about today to the governor just a few hours ago. This idea that one of the things we focus on, we talked about aligning systems last month. But one of the things that we're, that we're being really intentional about is this idea of focusing on durable skills. And we've called them at the Catalyst, we call them professional skills. Nationally, they really focus on durable skills. So, maybe we're migrating to durable skills in the way we talk about them. But the idea of, of infusing durable skills, not just in our CTE programming. It'll be central there and that will be our model for how we roll out this, this idea of how you instruct and, and teach, you know, these durable skills, but also in our regular coursework. And so, we're, we're taking our first steps towards really tying in something meaningful even to our citizenship and the way we evaluate, you know, how we're measuring our own, our own instruction in, in that space. And, and let me be a little more clear about that. Durable skills are those things like critical thinking, communication. And it goes on and on. I, I, I think there are other elements of durable skills that, you know, are all incorporated in the, in the, in the list, that they're all really valuable. But I think our, our goal is to especially focus on those things that we feel as technology increases, probably we're about a decade behind with social media, the influence of social media. But it certainly is AI becomes a greater force in the lives of young people. We want to teach them skills that transcend AI, that are, that are, that are the most human parts of us. And, and we've taken for granted that we all naturally come to the, to the school system at the same place. The research tells us that most young people, by the time they're sophomores in high school, they're actually up to three years behind in terms of social interactions because they've lost up to 15,000 social interactions that they would have other, that their generation before them had. And so, we want to be intentional because what we have found is students today are brighter, they're more thoughtful, they have big ideas. The world is in excellent hands, but it, but, but we feel like it's incumbent upon us to give them some of the experiences that they've lost. And we feel like, and this is the kicker, the only way to really do that, the only way to really teach that is to put students in situations where they naturally have to rely on those skills. And we do, we're at our very best in a space like Catalyst where they give them, they, they put them on the hot seat and they have to develop those skills and apply them in a real-world situation. But we have, we have, we have a group working on how, how does that look in, in our regular schools to give students opportunities to develop these durable skills that are really those things that make us at our very best as human beings. So, big focus on that. I don't want it to get lost in, in the minutia of aligning systems and all the other things we're trying to do. And I'm, and I'm willing to answer any questions about that. I know that's, can be a little bit of a heady topic, you know?
Thank you, Superintendent Linford. No questions right now? He did a great explanation. Yeah, thank you so much. That was great. Okay, we have consent items, one through four. Is there anything on the consent agenda that you would like moved to a business item? Nope? Okay, then I will entertain a motion on those consent items?
I move, we approve consent items, one through four.
Okay, is there a second for that? Second? Okay. We have, any discussion? Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Price and a second by Ms. Powell to approve consent items, one through four. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you so much. Next, we'll go to our business items. And we'll start by calling Ms. Julie Lundell up, our Assessment Director, to talk about Trust Plan Framework.
Thank you, President Gerard. Good evening and Vice President Price and board members. Julie Lundell, your new Assessment Director. And tonight, I'm gonna give you just a brief overview of the Teacher-Student Success Plan and ask if you'll consider a motion to approve that framework when we're done talking about it. And all of you have been here at least a year, so you've seen this process at least once before. So, we'll just be kind of refreshing your memory of going through this last year. So, our Teacher and Student Success Plan incorporates two main parts. And the first one is the Land Trust Plan. And this is funding that comes through the legislature and is directed by the legislature and the State School Board on many of the requirements around that. And the second part is the Teacher and Student Success Plan, which is the goals and the action steps are determined more by the principal but with input from stakeholders. This year, on our Land Trust Funding to our district, we received about 10.6 million. And this is allotted per pupil. And it's up from 10.2 million a year ago. So, in general, over the years that we've had this, this has been on an increasing trend. And it's funny, that really makes a fantastic difference in our schools. And you can kind of see the low for our smallest schools at 16,000 and the high for our largest high school is at 398,000. So, it's quite a variation, but based on student size of those campuses. And our Teacher and Student Success Funding is at 17.5 million that goes out to the schools and 5.85 million that is used at the district to pay salaries and benefits. The legislation allows 25% of the funding to be used for salaries and benefits, and we do that in our district. And that's a big benefit for our teachers and their paychecks, as well as the 17.5 million that goes out to the schools for individual programs in the schools. Often, people have questions about what kinds of things we commonly see in the plans. And so, these are just, you know, every plan is a little different. But some of the common areas you see in elementaries, we often see paying for professional learning days. We see evidence-based teacher literacy trainings or other evidence-based trainings for those teachers, reading and math tutors or, or technology supports. Our secondary schools often also have technology supports that are in their plans. They also might add additional educators to decrease class sizes or increase some of the offerings they're able to offer. They may pay for coaches frequently out of these funds, pay for student academic success mentors or mentors for their ELL students. And those are just some of the kind of things that we often see in the plans. Like I said, each one is individual to that school and that community council and the stakeholders and their needs within the parameters set by the legislature. But those are kind of some common areas that we see. The actual framework, which was in your documents, kind of outlines the guidelines and processes that we use as we go through developing these plans. It has kind of an overview of the timelines as well as what's actually in our app that we use as the schools and the community councils develop their plans. So, I'll tell you a little bit about that. In that, you would have seen the breakdown of the areas where they're putting in their mission and the district mission and vision and how they're aligning with that, as well as some consideration of specific needs at their school after they've reviewed their data. And then it has academic goals and it has belonging goals. Our app this year, the plan will be quite similar to previous years that you've seen. We always make a few tweaks just to, you know, make the language just a little bit better or make the flow of the digital side flow a little bit better. But by and large, it's, it's very similar to what you've seen. So, our schools, this is the general timeline that they follow that you would see in the plan. And that's in November, they're doing their training with their community councils, maybe starting off with some of the data sharing with, with their teams. And then in January, they're doing a final report on the previous year's plan and expenditures. And they're putting that into the State Trust Plans website. Then in that, January through March is really a critical window for our community councils and our schools where they're reviewing the data, looking at the academic needs, establishing their goals, determining how the funding is going to be used, making those action plans. And that's a really critical piece that happens in that January to March window. Then we'll provide from the Assessment Department some supports to them to make sure they have all the training they need to get everything in place. And their plans will be due on April 5th. So, the Assessment Department supports all of this process. We help make sure they understand their timelines, provide training and resources for them to share with their community councils. And we then also do training with you throughout the year. And on April 5th, when we get those plans turned in, then we will during the month of April, do an initial review of the plans just to kind of make sure that everything is in place there that, that we hope and think needs to be in place. So, we will leave that mostly during the month of April. Then for the board, your responsibilities fall under, at this point where we review the framework. And you'll consider a proposal to approve that. And then in February, you'll receive a report on the finalized plans and, and accept that. And we then have a required training in April that we do with you for community councils. And then on May 5th, there'll be an opportunity to, and you'll probably remember this from last year, like divide out all the plans and how that's going to be reviewed by, by the board. And you'll have until June 2nd to go through that process where the board is doing the reviewing of the plans. So, that's the, the proposed timeline there that we have. And so, if you have questions about the process or the framework, I'll do my very best to answer them. And otherwise, you can consider a motion to approve the framework if you, if you choose.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lundell. You did a great job with that. I think most of us are familiar, but are there any questions, Ms. Stevens?
I just have, I just have a question, wondering about the amount that was received, if that has been what was approved or voted on, if that's been implemented?
The amount in reference to the Land Trust Plan or?
That the percentage would be increased is what they disperse?
Oh, yes, it was approved. And last year in the legislature, the?
Yep. So, is that number that we received reflected of that?
That, I'm not sure, because I am not sure of the rollout timeline. I can look into that.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
But I do believe that that percentage was adjusted. And whether that's this year or next year, we can look into.
That's what I was wondering. Next year, I'm not sure.
Yeah, so, that should, you know, over time definitely be increasing our amounts that our schools are getting.
That was a great piece of legislation that passed. So, we're excited about that. So, any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the TSSA Land Trust Plan Framework for the 2026-2027 school year.
Thank you, Ms. Hogan. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, a second by Ms. Price?
No, it was by?
Oh, who's that?
Ms. Mercer.
Oh, Ms. Mercer, sorry. Okay, thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Hogan, a second by Ms. Mercer to approve the TSSA Land Trust Plan Framework for the 26-27 school year. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Lundell. Okay, now, we have Mr. Tim Luffel, our Business Administrator, to talk to us about Shoreline Site.
Thank you, President. About five, six years ago, a new development went in in Syracuse between Buffalo Point and the Jensen Pond area where we're currently building a new school. In anticipation of potentially having to build a school there, we bought almost 11-acre piece of land in that neighborhood. Since then, we are currently building the school by Jensen Park. And a charter school has been built right across the street from the new elementary that we're building. So, the chances of needing another school in that area are extremely small, probably negligent. And so, we are proposing that we look at this to declare this property as surplus property. What that designates is the district could then at that point sell that property. Another consideration as we look at that, because it's in the middle of a neighborhood, the neighbors have expectations of how that land is to be maintained. We have a lot of issue keeping weeds down, snow removal, all those kinds of, there's a lot of maintenance on a property like that. And so, we're proposing that the board consider this and make a motion to consider this property surplus. And then we could market the property and then probably in the next month or two.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Luffel on this? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the Shoreline Site in Syracuse as surplus property.
Thank you, Ms. Price. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Barber. So, there's a motion by Ms. Price and a second by Ms. Barber to approve the Shoreline Site in Syracuse as surplus property. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor of this motion? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes. Thank you so much. Okay, Mr. Luffel, you're on for the Burton Elementary addition.
Yes, one of our last bond projects is the Burton High Office remodel, addition and remodel of the school, which will involve faculty room, multipurpose room for the students. We had hired Willmang Construction as the CMGC. They have now collected their bids and have proposed a gross maximum price of, I think that's in the thing there, $7,993,728. So, we would like a motion from the board accepting that as the gross maximum price for this project.
Okay, are there any questions? Okay, we'll hear a motion if you're ready.
I move to approve the Willmang Construction for the Burton Elementary addition and remodel project with the guaranteed maximum price of $7,993,728.
Okay, there's a motion by Ms. Barber. Do I hear a second? A second. Okay, thank you, Ms. Stevens. There's a motion by Ms. Barber and a second by Ms. Stevens to approve Willmang Construction for the Burton Elementary addition and remodel project with the guaranteed maximum price of $7,993,728. Any more discussion on the motion? All in favor of this motion? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes and that's going to be really exciting for Burton Elementary. Okay, now, we have Dr. Toon and Ms. Ruth Ann Keller talking about their favorite subject. Let's go calendar. Okay.
Hello, board.
Hello.
President Gerard and Vice President Price, Dr. Linford and board members. Happy to be here to give you first, well, first say thank you for your attention to the calendar. And second, to give you a brief overview of what's happened so far. And then Dr. Toon has some statist, not statistical, some survey things to share with you. So, we first met back in September with the, with, well, actually, August with the Calendar Committee. We met twice, came up with a calendar, presented it. And it went out for public, for public comment. Came back as people were very concerned with the early start date and that there was a week before Memorial Day that we were already out of school. So, we were stay at work with us. We have moved the, the graduate, high school graduations to the week before Memorial Day. We were able to move the start date to just three days later, but still later. And we presented that to you in November. And the, and, oh, no, that was October. And then it was approved, but there was a concern with the imbalance now of the semesters. So, we administratively, we came up with another calendar, put them, the previously approved calendar out with the alternate calendar for a survey because you asked us to do that. And we got, got our results. And I'm going to turn the time over to Dr. Toon to discuss those results.
Thank you, Ms. Keller.
Thank you, Ruth Ann, and thanks for the, to the board for your time on this. So, the motion that was entertained and passed last board meeting was a motion to approve the proposed calendar on first reading and to determine with a recommendation that we revisit the question of the semester balance because there's a 14-day difference between second semester and first semester on the proposed calendar. So, knowing that, we administratively went to work a little bit on that and the very quick timeline that we've had since November. We put out what we call the alternate calendar. We put it side-by-side with the proposed calendar that we approved on first reading. The alternate calendar, and I'll say this, and I need to be, be really careful about this, the alternate calendar is not a proposed calendar by the Calendar Committee. That was one that we just created administratively to retain as much as possible the start date and end date. That was one that we just created administratively to retain as much as possible the start date and end date, which was so important based on the previous cycle of public comment. But also moved the semester break from winter break to the Martin Luther King Day weekend. There are some elements of that calendar that would need to go through the calendar approval process. The location of professional days, those kinds of things. We just put them on there as a, as kind of a placeholder based on what we anticipated could happen. But that that calendar, in my opinion, is not really ready for board consideration for approval, but rather was just posed as, okay, if we're going to move this semester break, what do people think about it? And so that's how we posed that calendar out to the community. And so that went out there and we have survey results to share related to that. It's kind of my favorite survey results ever. Then we were also asked in board meeting about the academic impact of imbalanced semesters. And we noted in the discussion in workshop last November that the academic impact of an imbalanced semester is a little bit hard to measure because standardized test data is usually linked to full year classes. It's not linked to semester-based classes and it's hard to tie graduation rates and ACT, attribute that to the student's experience in a semester-based class. And so we noted in that discussion that the best we can probably do in terms of academic outcome measures to answer this question is a student grades conversation. So I'll share the results of both of those things that we did. This is why it's my favorite survey. Because in, like more than a decade of working in survey data with an N size of twenty-seven hundred plus, right? So this is not, and Ruth Ann and I watched this throughout the week, like every day we would get on and be like, has it broken? Do we see a difference? It was fifty-fifty from day one to day two to day three until we closed the survey. It just grew on equal sides throughout. So the community is not just largely, but like exactly split in their opinion regarding whether we should have the calendar that has the semester break at winter with all of the things that that comes with and the benefits and drawbacks of that, as well as the other group that thinks we should have more balanced semesters and the break at Martin Luther King Day. Now, we did ask them to identify who they were and we saw some differences based on who they were. So students were sixty to forty, and we had good N sizes in all these groups. We had, students were sixty to forty in favor of the calendar that has a semester break at winter. So that there's a clean break for students at semester. The parents and community were a little bit more towards that fifty-fifty. There was a very, very slight in favor of the alternate calendar and teachers and staff a little bit more significantly with fifty-four, forty-six. And so those those N sizes are significant. You can you can see that. Now, what we have is a little bit of a difference of opinion, but that difference of opinion is pretty much split. And so if you were to ask me on the street, is there a winner and a loser in terms of where we put the break? From the community perspective, no. And that plays out too in a lot of the calendar committee discussions that we have. And Ms. Hogan can attest to this. The committee's split on a lot of these things too. Like when do we put spring break? Do we do it here or here? When do we put, do we do semester break here or here? And we're pretty close to fifty-fifty a lot of times on the calendar committee. And sometimes it comes down to splitting hairs and kind of talking about like the the depth of the feelings and whether they're really significantly opposed or only moderately opposed or in favor of certain perspectives. And so I regret to inform you that the community is not going to help you with this decision.
Okay.
So let's talk about academic impact. So we, what we did is we took all the course grades for semester-based courses and we calculated a mega GPA. So we said essentially if the school district were one entire student and the whole semester were one entire term, what would the GPA be for semester-based courses? And we looked at first semester in teal and second semester in orange. And the GPA is just the traditional GPA, so like a three point one is just above a B average. And you'll note that the the differences between first and second semester are very small, which means kids typically get about the same grade pattern in first semester as they do in second semester. In twenty-two, twenty-three, we went, we went back to the to the last year that we had a significant calendar that that was not imbalanced. And that was twenty-two, twenty-three. That was the last year that semester ended at Martin Luther King Day weekend. And we didn't go back farther than that because both, farther than that, we started to get into the COVID effect on grades and things like that. So really, we only have three years with that kind of as our baseline. Then we had a big differential, ten-day differential in twenty-three, twenty-four, and then a six-day differential in twenty-four, twenty-five. We did not look at the current academic year because we only have first term data. We don't have comparability for the second term. And but this current year, I think, is a six-day differential as well. And so what we found was that across the board, there was not really a discernible impact in GPAs between first and second semester that could be attributed to imbalance. First semester GPAs are slightly higher than second semester GPAs regardless of how many day differential there are between the semesters. We we looked also, we wanted to say, okay, what about like specific content areas? And CTE classes are most significantly, they're they're our content area that has the most, the highest number of semester-based courses. And so we looked specifically at CTE classes. So it's the same data, but it's just a slice of that data that only includes CTE. And the the trend is a little different. Oh, can I just pause? Our grades are going up. From twenty-two, twenty-three to twenty-four, twenty-five. It has nothing to do with the question on the table, but it's just cool that our grades are going up.
Celebrate that, yeah.
So this one is the same exact data, but just a slice of that data for CTE. It's a little bit of a different pattern in that like for some reason, CTE class GPAs are slightly higher in second semester than they are in first semester, which I don't know why. But because the pattern persisted across all three years, regardless of the differential number of days in semesters, we can't really attribute that to second semester being longer than first semester because it didn't happen. It also happened in twenty-two, twenty-three when that day differential didn't occur. So again, academic impact is, there's no measurable academic impact of a differential number of days in a semester. So again, kind of like the survey data, what we're seeing is we're looking for this compelling reason to move to this model that doesn't have a differential days. And in the academic data that we looked at and in the survey data we looked at, we didn't find it. And so our recommendation is to move forward with the calendar committee's work on the draft two that you considered last last month. If you are intentional about a priority about balanced days or some other calendar priority, you, I would recommend that we either approve or not approve the calendar that's on the table. Approval would mean we would put that calendar on the website and it would be the decision for the upcoming school year. Not approval would mean the committee would go back to work with whatever priorities discussed by the board and we would bring another calendar for board approval at a later date using the process that we have. And so that's kind of where we are. Given the short time period and the available data that we have, we feel like that's about as thorough a look as we can get. It mirrors our experience with the calendar committee in terms of divided opinions. And some people see things through different lenses relative to the calendar. And that's our presentation. We would hope that you would entertain a motion regarding the draft two that was approved last month.
Okay, I know there are going to be questions. And I know that we have comments also. So I, can we, we could ask questions. Can we also make comments also before the vote? Because they're kind of similar anyway. So, okay. Questions and then comments. Questions first, clarifying questions. Ms. Mercer?
Yeah, just for clarification, both calendars would have the graduation date moved back and and not ending until right before Memorial Day?
So I can speak to that a little bit. There's a lot of ways to address the semester imbalance, right? The semester imbalance can be addressed by, you know, in part by eliminating fall break. We could address the semester imbalance by pushing the start date earlier into August if we retain the semester break at winter break. The semester balance can also be addressed by moving winter, the semester break into January. So there's lots of ways. So if the if the board said, we want a calendar that has a balanced number of days across semesters, the calendar committee could go to work on that. Now, clearly, based on our experience from October to November, our community was very intentional in their in their comments and not fifty-fifty split. There was a loud and and present perspective about, we like the later start date in August and we like graduation pushed as close to Memorial Day as possible. And so the calendar committee, I think, would likely consider calendar options that only have, that that kind of keep that later start date principle and that graduation close to Memorial Day principle in place because we already kind of know that's what the community wants. And the board expressed favorable perspectives toward that calendar, those two aspects of the current proposed calendar before. And so what I would recommend to the calendar committee is that we look at ways of, if if that's the direction the board goes, that the calendar committee would look at ways within the parameters that the board's already weighed in on and expressed the board's priority on.
So you're saying that voting yesterday means that no, it would not have made those changes yet?
I don't understand the question, I'm sorry.
If if I were to vote yesterday and if the board entirely were to vote yesterday, those changes of moving the start date back and moving graduation a week later would not be applied.
Sorry, depends on the motion that's made. If the motion is to approve the proposed calendar.
That's already been read on first reading.
Then the day, then moving it back and graduation would be applied.
Can I, can I clarify something on that? The administration's recommending you approve the calendaring committee's recommend, recommended calendar.
Yeah, and that calendar is the one that is the proposed calendar, which has August twentieth start date and graduation right before Memorial Day.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, okay, thank you. I I do have a comment that that I wanted to bring up and I think others might, might also. After studying the calendar, I think all of us have put a lot of time into looking at this. I have come to that conclusion that it is impossible to come up with a perfect calendar that is satisfactory to everyone. There's just so many factors to consider. I've looked at the data that's been gathered up and considered all the feedback that I personally received. And I want to thank everyone that's given, responded with this valuable feedback that we've heard from parents and educators. It runs the gamut on these comments. Some educators love ending the semester at Christmas break. Some are willing to extend it into January. Some are troubled by the uneven semesters. Some are okay with it. I talked to a CTE teacher. It affects those the most, I think, that was was unhappy with the uneven semesters. But many parents love not having to worry about homework. I don't know, I I want to hear from our students. Soon as I I finish this, I'm going to ask these students. But some students love not having homework or projects over Christmas break. And some have told me, it'll be interesting to see what they say because some have said, oh, I use that time to catch up. But what I'm trying to say with all of this, you know, and then for years that have been on the board, we want to start as late as we can in August, but we want to end before Memorial Day. And it's just impossible to accommodate everyone. And and that's why I'm I'm saying this. It's just a really hard task and it's a hard task for our calendar committee as well. And I just want to make very clear how much, how grateful we are for the work of Ms. Keller and Dr. Toon and our calendar committee because they've worked really hard. And they have talked about and considered all of these things as well. So I really want to focus on the process that we've had. I just so appreciate their efforts and I think the process is very important. And it's important, and this came up at the last meeting, to know that there were educators and parents and administrators, educators of all kinds, teachers on this calendar committee. And I just appreciate the work that's been done. I want to focus on that process. And I don't want to disregard the work that has been done. Would you guys like to give your input?
First of all, good job figuring this out because this is a lot of work and it's overwhelming. So good job on that. But just from a student perspective, both of us have had both schedules of having the, like, winter break being the endpoint or having it be later. I think I would prefer having it be, winter break be the endpoint just because it is, makes starting third term like way easier and more, I don't know, just better because you just get a fresh start at the new year. And it's not as stressful for us to have to catch up and work over the holidays. And maybe that's also for teachers too. They don't have to like worry as much about preparing over the, or like grading things. I don't know. But I just think it'd be better to have it start there. But this looks really good. So good job, guys.
Thank you so much. Would you like to comment too?
I agree with what she said. I think, I think it's nice so, because winter break's a long time. And I feel like if it's like, if you have like two weeks or a week, then you have all your finals right then. So then it's like you go on winter break, forget everything you learned and then you have to re-study it. So that's how I look at it. So I would, I love the break right before winter break. And then also when you had like the models and with the CTE, did you guys look at like CE calculations?
We didn't do specific like types of courses in that regard.
That's true. Sweet.
Okay, thank you, Macy and Jarrett. Okay, any other questions? Or comment?
I did just want to say as far as being on the calendar committee, it's so fun.
Yes, I forgot to include, we have a board member on the calendar committee too and I forgot to mention that. So we appreciate her work too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Krista.
I I did want to put out there that we, in the calendar committee, we never did actually discuss moving the semester after. There were kind of some big rock issues that we were trying to work around and that semester break was one of them. And so the committee really didn't wrestle with that, like if we could move it after the semester, after Christmas break, or if we should keep it before Christmas break. I think the struggle really is, is the wanting to start a little bit later in August is so overwhelming. And it's just really hard then to get the first semester all with, get the whole first semester in before Christmas break. And so it's almost, in my opinion, it's almost one or the other at this point.
Thank you. Ms. Stevens?
I just really appreciate you looking into the academic implications. That was really interesting to see. So I appreciate that. That's very helpful.
Ms. Barber?
Yes, thank you. You probably are loving the word calendar these days. No more. But no, I think it's been a really good process. I think I speak for all of the board. We take this really seriously because it applies to all of us directly, but also we hear a lot about it. I mean, in the elevator, at the grocery store, pickleball court, people want to talk about the calendar. And so, and it's a good thing. I actually am really appreciative that there's so many points of input. I can't think of anything else we do so thoroughly. Like there's parent input, there's teacher input, there's a committee. So it's fantastic. And ultimately, it comes down to us as a school board, which is why we take it so seriously. I would say I, the semester break thing, I had never paid so much attention to until this year. And it's hard because I don't want to hyper-focus on it, but it is probably the biggest issue we're grappling with right now. And I will just be super, super incredibly unpopular with all my friends right now and say I also think that ending at the semester makes a lot of sense. But I also think you need to academically be balanced, which is why starting earlier in August really does make the most sense. And like I said, I'm on record being unpopular. I can see why parents love it. I was always wanting a later start date, but now that I've sat here, I, there's so much wisdom. And there's a reason so many school districts all around, they start earlier because you want to have that. And it's like we said last time, you can't have it all. You can't have a later start date and finish the semester and get these really nice breaks during the school year. You just can't have everything. And so I would agree with all of those things. And since we are, like we said, adjusting, we're we're taking the latest August start date we possibly can, I would say, I mean, reasonably. And going all the way to Memorial Day next year, I do think that's a win for the community because we're responding to that feedback that we have. But I want to give the caveat that it does come at a cost because it's, it's not an easy thing to do. And there is, I mean, the number one question I get from people is, I cannot figure out why you start so early in August. And I want to say, I couldn't either, but now I can tell you, these are the reasons, like this discussion right here is why. And I just want to put that out there and say, this this question will keep coming up. And we know it's hot in August. We know we'd all rather be on the lake or whatever, but there's a reason. It makes a lot of sense. So that being said, and outing myself as the most unpopular person with all of my friends, I think that that's where, if we're not going to start, if we're going to prioritize starting as late as possible in August, which I I do support, I think the community did a good job responding to that feedback. I think that I really liked the alternative calendar you guys proposed because I felt like it's more balanced in semesters. And I'll reiterate what I said last time. I really was concerned about the two additional professional development days after the full two-week winter break. And on the alternate calendar, there was just one day, if I have it right, right before Martin Luther King Day. So it's like a professional development day that it was a nice four-day weekend for families as well. So I think it gives a really, a better balance given the constraints that we have. So I think it gives a really, a better balance given the constraints that we have. So there is no perfect calendar and in this case, I, I think that was a good proposal that you guys had on there.
Present, Jarrett, can I, can I make a quick comment?
Yeah.
Is that appropriate?
Yes.
Thank you.
Because we can't vote on that calendar.
So my, my concern on, on the motion today is that it would be very difficult to have the board entertain a motion to approve the alternate calendar because the alternate calendar wasn't really proposed.
Exactly, we cannot do that.
The administrative process didn't bring that to the, to the board. However, if the board rejects the motion on the table, which, there's no motion yet, but if there is a motion at some point and that motion is, as we recommend, to move to approve the draft two calendar and that motion fails, then the calendar committee can come back with something else for the board, board to consider. And that would be the proposal through the administrative process that we have.
Okay. Or we can al, also vote on second and final on the proposed calendar. And then I'm not sure that we need a motion to send it back to the calendar committee.
That would just naturally happen.
That, that would happen and.
If you approve the calendar on second and final?
No, no. If we vote no on the one that's on the table.
If it's not approved.
Then would we need to make a motion to send it back to the calendar committee?
I don't believe so because I think the calendar committee.
I think it just automatically goes back to the calendar committee, correct?
Our current process would be for the calendar committee to bring another, a proposed calendar from the calendar.
Exactly.
Can I, can I clarify something? But I, I, I think we would want direction from the board because what we, what we have is, what we found is no compelling reason to be concerned about the imbalance. And the folks who oversee CTE and oversee SEL and all of the elements of our district have put their stamp of approval on this. If the board has information that the administration doesn't have, like we'd want to know what, like what is the thing we were going to bring back to the calendaring committee?
Yep. Okay. If there are no more comments or questions? Do you have another comment?
Well, I, I could comment on, on that. I, I did receive some feedback from teacher, teachers and administrators that were very concerned about the imbalance of the semesters and felt that it, the fourteen day was insurmountable for them. And that, I mean, I could quote, that quotes some of the quotes, but that it just outweighs all the other considerations as having that. They felt it was really hard. It was going to be very difficult for their teachers and for them to make that work.
Present.
Ms. Pell? Can I ask a clarifying question? So superintendent, you had mentioned the head of CTE and SEL approves the calendar with the fourteen-day imbalance.
Yeah, I'm talking about the administration. I'm talking about my superintendency who oversees those groups, yeah.
Okay, so not, so you're talking about assistant superintendent?
Yes.
Okay, not like the people?
No. My administration's the superintendent's office. And that's school directors and assistant superintendents.
Okay.
And I would say that we, we've also, you know, we, obviously we're in the thick of it. We, we've heard all of the things. And you know, there's this part of me that wishes the calendaring committee had brought us the other thing, that I'd be saying, we should be doing the other thing. Because the evidence that we have is, is, is challenging as you can see. It's a fifty-fifty. And the board is, has the luxury of going, hey, the, we have a process. And I do think if the process needs to be tweaked, that is a good place to have discussion as well. But I'll say this, I, I mean, I, I can read things too about, about the, the, you know, taking the, the health and social emotional wellbeing into, into account and what we know about the imbalance, when we, the, the highest imbalance, we had the highest GPAs. So like it's hard to find good data to say the imbalance is impossible to overcome. That said, I, I've heard, I really have truly heard both. I, I mean, I, I went back to two thousand twenty-two when the people were begging us to end it at semester. And I won't, I won't say his name, but he was a very prominent educator and a very prominent math educator, sent me emails saying, please, for the love of Pete, you know, we're killing our learning environment by having the two-week breaks. And I just think we end up on this pendulum a little bit. I, I, I do think it's, it is fine to take it back to the committee and to really have real consideration about that break, but I think we just want to give them really good direction so we don't spend another month, you know, sort of, you know, looking for any information that we can find to back up the concern.
There was one thing that has not come up, that someone spoke to me about. It was the importance of keeping our semester break the same time as the university semester breaks. So, okay.
Can I just make a comment?
Yeah, Ms. Pell.
So some feedback I got is, one thing is they, both from teachers and parents, they really appreciated that there was another round of feedback. They just said, oh, wow, it feels like we're being listened to, e, even if they don't get what they want. And I just wanted to reiterate, reiterate that. I really appreciate that and I really liked that there was two calendars up there because I feel like if we have a proposal, then you get all the people who are against it. And then if you have another one, then, so you don't really get a great idea, but when you have two kind of different calendars, you get a more balanced idea, a very balanced idea this time.
Very well-balanced.
Fifty-fifty balance, fifty-fifty balance.
You could buy rice on that balance.
But I really love that, like maybe for future considerations, you can put two up there and just say, hey, which do you like better? I, I don't know. But I love the idea of trying to, which you guys mentioned last time, trying to go maybe locally at the school level and just have these back and forth discussions because it's not just a one-way discussion. It also teaches the community what the different considerations are and so I think we'd have better support there. I was wondering if it's possible to make a motion because I feel very strongly that we should keep with the community and like keeping the later start date because I feel like that's a very, very strong feedback that I get. So, so later start date and same with, you know, the, keep school ending more closer towards Memorial Day, like, like you guys originally said, but go back and just balance those days a little bit more. I, I guess I don't really care too much how you do it, whether, but is, is that just not, because fourteen days is just so, so broad. And I feel like if, if people are kind of fifty-fifty on whether we end the school break before or after, I do feel like we have quite a few teachers who are just like that. It's such a huge difference. It's difficult, especially the teachers who teach semester classes, very difficult to just try and cram that all in when it's a fourteen-day difference.
Okay. Unless there are any other comments, I will entertain.
I have one question.
Okay.
I was confused on this. I should have asked this at the beginning, sorry. So this draft two proposed calendar that we're looking at, because there was a, a change from when we saw it in October to in November, because that was when we realized that the later Memorial Day and we, we were safe. Did that calendar, this draft two that we're looking at, has that, did that go through the calendaring committee?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, draft two.
Yes.
Draft one, draft one was the initial proposal by the calendar committee. And then the calendar committee met and understood the public comment.
In that like November meeting, because I've heard about that.
And then the calendar committee is proposing draft two, which the board accepted on first reading.
On first reading already.
The calendar committee did see that one, the one with the.
That's the calendar committee's recommendation, which is the administration's recommendation.
And that's what we voted on.
Yeah, we did meet, they presented the news.
First reading. We've already voted on that on first reading. Yes.
Yes, I understood that. I just wanted to make sure this draft two one. Because I was kind of confused on the timing.
And we, we, we cannot vote on the alternate calendar because that has not been presented or on an agenda.
But we, but we could, if we decide, we could recommend that the calendar committee consider that, that alternate.
We could give it back to the calendar, calendar committee and have them relook.
As far as board action, as far as official board action, I don't think you can take board action that references the alternate calendar. The alternate calendar was never presented to the board.
Just to go back to the calendar committee.
The alternate calendar was presented as part of a survey.
So, so we're going to have to make, we would just send it back to the calendar committee with nothing else, just send it back to the calendar committee.
And you could send it back with the statement of priority.
But superintendent, Lindford is saying we need to give them some priorities. Yes.
What priority or what reasoning or something?
Like you did with us between the last meeting and now. It helped us at least try to find some kind of data we could bring.
But, but we're not going to say to them.
Not helpful data today.
Yeah. But we're not going to say to the calendar committee, we want you to choose the alternate calendar. We would just send it back to the calendar committee with these considerations.
Yep. And with some kind of a charge relative to whatever the concern is with the proposal so that we could fix that concern.
Exactly. Yes. So is there, if there's no more discussion, is there a motion, because we've already approved on first reading, is there a motion to approve the recommended calendar on the second and final reading?
I move to approve the twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven school year calendar as presented on second and final.
Oh, second. Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Price and a second by Ms. Stevens to approve the twenty-twenty-six, twenty-seven school year calendar as presented on second and final reading. Any more discussion?
I just have a procedural question.
Okay.
So how do we, if we, you know, because my preference would be not approve and send back to reduce those days, so.
First, we have to vote on the motion that's on the table.
So I don't do a alternate motion, okay.
So, no. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, again, to approve the twenty-twenty-six, twenty-seven school year calendar as presented on second and final reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Opposed.
Aye, no.
No.
Okay. So, okay.
Poor parliamentarian over here is struggling with that.
Yeah. Okay, let all in.
We're trying to do a fifty-fifty here.
All in favor of the twenty-twenty-six, twenty-seven school year calendar as presented on second and final reading, let's go down here.